I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of February 13, 2020, to order at 6 o'clock PM and ask Clerk Simski for roll call.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Eddington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Berry is absent. Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanak.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here. Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's say good evening to everyone. Thank you for coming. The first item is open forum. If there's anybody here who wants to comment on anything that's not on the agenda, none, seeing none, I'll close open forum and move on to reports. My report's first. A proud moment, Westmont High School wins the Do For Award. It's a national award that is presented to the school with the best professional learning community model. The model embraces the concept of community inclusion in education, thus giving students the best opportunity to learn. We're going to have representatives from the school district 201 in a future meeting to talk about that in a little bit more detail. But again, congratulations to, again, another national recognition, so. My next item is somebody who's been very instrumental in my career, along with several other people. He's represented the community for almost 40 years. He's been a mentor, he's been a friend, and finally got some recognition. So I'm going to ask Bob Fleck to come up and introduce Mr. Long.
This particular award is given every year at the Illinois Association of Park District State Conference. It's held at the Hyatt Regency downtown Chicago. It's continuing education information for the park industry. During this, at the Friday awards luncheon, there are a number of awards that are given out. There are 2,000 people just at the luncheon alone that get to see and hear about some of the great accomplishments and some of the great people in our industry. When the nominations, or call for nominations, came out in the fall, it was about time that this individual got recognized. He's been on the park board for 37 and a half years, and he's always preferred to stay in the background. We were keenly aware of his accomplishments and the things he's done for our community, and he was a perfect fit for this particular award. And it goes to somebody that really doesn't want any recognition, but all they want to do is make their park district and their community a better place. Obviously, that went to Jim Long, President of the Park Board. And what we're going to do is read the narrative that was presented as Jim was announced and walked to the stage, and then we'll show you a clip from the awards luncheon. So here's what was read and recorded. Jim Long is one of those rare individuals who has been happy to remain in the background, letting others receive accolades even though he has been one of the greatest influences on the growth, direction, and success of the Westmont Park District. Jim joined the park board in 1982 and has been at the head of the table for every discussion, negotiation, policy decision, and visionary action that has shaped the park district since then. Jim's vast knowledge and experience as a banker, real estate developer, and broker has proved immeasurable, along with his perspective as a loving husband, father, and grandfather. Time after time, Jim was the driving force behind a new project, land acquisition, or creative idea that kept the park district relevant and forward-thinking. As stewards of open space in the community, Jim has always believed the park district should never pass on an opportunity to acquire land, and he led the charge on nearly all our acquisitions, developments, and improvements. A former college basketball player, Jim is enthusiastic about promoting sports. He has advocated for the continuation of our existing programs, encouraged staff to create new ones, and supported the growth of our sports programs for all ages and genders. Jim coached all three of his children in park district programs while sponsoring a youth baseball team for more than 30 years through his personal business, Long Realty. Jim is the epitome of Mike Cassidy's own words, "Doing something good for the community, contributing something for the future." We are extremely happy to see him receive the IAPD Mike Cassidy Commissioner Community Service Award.
If you could please show the clip. The Mike Cassidy Commissioner Community Service Award pays homage to Mike Cassidy's 35-year commitment as a commissioner of the Freeport Park District, earning him the nickname "Mr. Parks." Mike Cassidy's volunteer spirit is reflected in those who demonstrate the highest degree of community service and personal integrity. As we hear, Bob Fleck, Executive Director of the Westmont Park District, highlight his accomplishments, would this year's Mike Cassidy Community Service Award winner from the Westmont Park District, James M. Long, please come to the stage to be recognized.
I truly was not aware this was going to happen. All I can say to all my fellow commissioners that are here, continue and contribute all you can. It's been the most rewarding experience of my life. I've had my really great friends. Three years ago, one of my really good friends on the park board, who was actually before me, was Diane Main, and Diane was the chairman of the IAPD, and she worked through cancer and contributed. She loved our park district, as all of our commissioners that I've worked with have loved. So please, take me, use me as an example of sticking with it and doing the best job you can for your park district. Thank you.
Now you can call Mr. Long. Enough with me. Jim Long?
I don't want to cry again. I'm really not like that, but I thank you for recognizing me tonight, Ron. I appreciate it. And I do it for all the commissioners that I've worked with. You know, Ron knows, how many years did the five of us have at one time?
Over 150.
How many?
163.
Yeah.
So 163 years as park commissioners together is a lot of years. I accept that award really on behalf of all them. Bob Burnus, I think he finished with 43 years, and Diane, 39?
38.
38. Sandra, right up there?
38.
And I went from the fourth-longest member to the first in about two years. We lost Diane, we lost Sandra, and Bob retired. I want to say I'm so enthusiastic right now. We have a great park board now. Some of my new friends and park members are here. You know, John's been on 15, 16 years already, Ron? That's hard to believe.
We got another.
Karen's been, is one of the new ones, but she's so, such a wonderful person, and she fits right in with us. And what I want to say is, all the years, no one else is here from the park board, no. But all the years that we were together on the park board, we always agreed to disagree and then go on with our business. We never carried over, I did sometimes, but the others, the others.
I'm glad you said that.
The others, only when I got voted down.
Yeah.
It was once a year, maybe. But we have a very exciting new board now, really good people. I feel that we're in really good hands for the future. You know, the years in the 80s and 90s, we had growth, and we were buying parkland and golf courses, and we did a lot of things that really are going to help the future Westmontians because they're going to have open space, they're going to have recreation. That's what we're all about. And I just wanted to comment one more thing to the public. You know, a park district, not every town has them. We have a park district in Westmont, sorry, and we are separately funded from the village. A lot of people think we're part of the village. We're really not. We have contiguous borders, so all of our park members are members of the village, but we have separate taxing, and that's a great thing because our budget and our plans are only for parks and recreation. That's what we formed this for, and it's really a good thing. Go look at our neighbor in Hinsdale, which is a rec department, and you see the difference between what you provide your public and what we provide. We're a fabulous, our ball fields, everything we have, we try to do the best we can. And trust me, our budget is, I don't want to say bare bones, but we keep it thin and we don't have extravagant spendings. So I'm real proud of what we've done and accomplished, and I accept that award on behalf of all the commissioners present and in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Marie, lots of whole board come up.
Come on, everybody.
All right.
Good, congrats.
I love the second hole.
Did you?
I love you to a certain extent.
Okay.
All right, here we go. Ready? One, two. And would we want to get a park commissioner?
Yes.
Except for the coach of the one team.
We'll get you, take this one in. All right, ready? Here we go. No, everybody, Kelly, come on up.
I was going to take your partner's ball.
Okay. Michael.
Michael.
Mike, come on in. This is my son-in-law right from my room.
I'm not early today.
And I'm going to ask everyone to kind of take a step. All right, we're pretty close here. I'm missing three though. There we go. All right, ready? Here we go. One, two, and. Congratulations. Thanks, James. Goodbye, friend.
Well, congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
What did Ginny do to her wrist again? Did she fall down?
I know.
Let me slide back in.
She broke it. She came in here, she told me a couple days after, and she didn't go.
Jerry, Jerry broke it?
Yeah. She's saying we can blame him. Thank you. Jerry's fault. As Jim and his family are leaving, and I can't say enough about the commitment that he puts into his community for residents. I mean, that's 38 years of non-paid commitment to this community, so it's very evident of what the park has and does by his leadership. So that's all I have, and I'll turn to Clerk Simski.
All right, I just have a few announcements. First of all, our village offices will be closed February 17th for President's Day. Recycling garbage pickup will not be affected, so you can put your garbage and your recycling out if you're recycling week. And the Citizen of the Year, we're encouraging everyone to nominate individuals who dedicate themselves to giving back. Nominate someone through the Chamber website. And lastly, voter registration, the clerk's business office will stop taking voter registrations as of February 18th for the March 17, 2020 general primary election. Voter registration will reopen March 19, 2020. So that's the important thing.
Well, thank you. And you recovered from your surgery for your.
I recovered, yes.
Very good. All right, Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Westmont First will meet Tuesday, next Tuesday, February 18, 6:00 PM at the library. We'll continue our census work. And then Environmental Improvement Committee will meet on February 3. We are working on, as discussed earlier, we're working on a food scraps program with waste management. We hope to roll that out on April 1st. And then, lastly, Richmond Gardens has a fundraising opportunity. It's about bees, called the Pollinators, and it's going to be shown on February 26 at 6:30 PM at Cinemark, Seven Bridges. Tickets are $10, and then there's a $1.95 handling fee of some kind or taxes. Anyway, there's tickets still available if you can support Richmond Gardens in that way, and you can go to tickets.demand.film event 9777. I shouldn't have got into that, but anyway, it's also being promoted on Facebook as well, but support for Richmond Gardens. There's a lot of really great things going on over there, and we're, Mr. Yader, through the EIC, is putting together a list of things we can expect this year, and it's starting to take shape and be the education garden that we had hoped it would be. And as you know, we share that with Claritin Hills. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We had an Administration Finance Committee meeting tonight, and out of that came a lot of housekeeping. We talked a little bit about the Tiff District Opportunity Downtown. We talked about code container, container code enforcement. We also discussed the Fire Department Ad-Hoc Committee reported in. And in addition to that, then we talked about, a little bit about some of the reports that came from the various department heads, and the biggest one was how much money we made this year from the gambling, so that was very nice to hear. Next up, I have just a real quick mention of the Jig and Swig, which is pub crawl, which is being sponsored by Westmont Events, Westmont Special Events. It's going to be March 14. It's from 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. You sign up at westmontevents.com. You pick your starting and ending location there, and tickets are nominal, and it's a lot of fun. It's a pub crawl, what can you say? And then last, I just wanted to mention that the US Census website is 2020census.gov. We'll have language assistance in 59 different languages starting in mid-March. People can respond by phone in 13 languages, so it's really, really important to be counted. It's not a policing action, it's simply, let's don't leave money on the table the federal government can give us to support our public. Thank you, and that's all.
Well, thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is right here, March 26, 4:30 PM, again, Village Hall. Want to let everybody know that Public Works had a walkthrough of the new facility. They were joined by Ecom, who designed it, and you can see some pictures here, so it's coming along great. Hopefully, the snow holds up and we can beat our projected date, huh? How's that looking? Pretty good? Yeah, great. I can't wait to see more photos. And then moving on, it's just another quick census update. I just wanted to highlight some of the questions that you will be asked, so people can be aware: name, age, date, birth, race, number of folks in your house. All these questions are important to make sure that you're, actually, the information does count, so please put the time into it. There's a ton of information out there. You're going to start seeing these yard signs pop up. Let's make sure everybody gets counted. And that's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Well, thank you, but Trustee Berry is not here tonight. Would you like to report for him?
Sure. Yeah, all right. First off, Economic Development Committee, the next meeting is March 4, 9:00 AM, right here at Village Hall. And then coming up next is Westmont 2020 Reader's Choice Voting. This is the fourth annual Westmont's Reader's Choice opportunity vote for our favorite Westmont dining experiences. Voting began on the 12th, and it's going to run through the 4th. Please vote at westmontchamber.com, and I believe this is one of those things you can vote early and often, isn't that right? So let's get those votes going. I don't know how it's going so far, but it's a good reminder for everybody to get in there and vote, so we can get a lot of traction. And then we had a Westmont, we had a ribbon cutting, and you can see from Thorough Corps, which was, which is going to be, I'm sorry, on Thursday, February 20 at 11:00 AM. They're located at 220 West Ogden. Please join us there and help welcome them to Westmont. And that's all that Harold has. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Johannik Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be February 27, 4:30 here. Everyone is welcome to attend. Fire Department, the Citizens Fire Academy, sign up is open for the 2020 Citizens Fire Academy. The academy is free and runs for five weeks, March 25 to April 22. I believe there's more information on the website, westmont.Illinois.gov, so check that out. Police Department, Sharps Containers. There is a Sharps disposal container in the lobby of the Westmont Police Fire Facility located at 500 North Cass Avenue. Residents can discard their syringes and other medical-use needles in the container during business hours. So I just want to make sure everyone knows that that is out there, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Trustee Eddington.
Only one thing tonight, Mayor. Just want to congratulate the Westmont Park District for an extremely successful second annual, now their winner of Beer Fest. 700 people attended on last Saturday, extremely successful. We had 24 different microbreweries, and so a very, very nice event, and we congratulate them. We also had a successful Lions Club event the day before that, and so we always appreciate all the community support. And my committee, which is Community Development, will be meeting in April. And that's it, sir.
Well, thank you. Moving on the agenda, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Any trustee see anything? Anything that I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Thank you. Very short consent agenda this evening. First is Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held January 16, 2020. That's followed by Finance Ordinance Number 18 in the amount of $3,681,189.46. There are no purchase orders, so the final item is a reduction in the available liquor licenses. Board to consider an ordinance reducing the number of available liquor licenses due to the forfeiture of liquor license by various businesses. I don't know if you want to list them, but there's four of them there.
They're on, yeah.
That completes the consent agenda.
Do you have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve as read, Little.
Second, Nero. Motion been made in second. On the question, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business, lease for space in Westmont Center. Board to consider an ordinance approving a Westmont Center lease for Marker District 60. Manager May.
This item, Marker School District 60 is one of our tenants in the Westmont Center. They have a lot of space in Westmont Center. They have the whole north side of the second floor, as well as some of the office space in the first floor. They expressed interest in expanding that. They've got some needs. If you recall, they did something temporarily while there was construction down at Westview Hills, but nonetheless, they want a permanent addition to available space. There's no unit number because it was Patty Belloc's original office, and that unit number was transferred to the front when she moved up front, you know, so on. So I don't have that information, but they've got expressed interest in the lease. It'll be under the same terms. We already have a lease agreement with them, and this is just adding additional space, and it'll be paid at the same unit price for the common area maintenance that we charge all tenants.
Do I have a motion?
Well, so moved, Eddington.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion been made in second. On the question.
They still have to take it to their board, but this is just the first step.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. The new business B, the Night Core Attent- antenna site license agreement, we're going to ask, I need a motion to postpone. It's not ready to be voted on yet.
Motion to postpone, Guzzo?
Second.
Motion's been made, second to postpone. Roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County. Board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County for maintenance of Liberty Park stormwater and drainage improvements. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The village owns various stormwater and flood control drainage properties in Liberty Park's neighborhood, including pump stations and detention basins. Under this IGA, the county will inspect and maintain those facilities in charge of village services. The IGA formalizes the current practices that the parties regarding these facilities. The county is uniquely qualified to handle this better than we are. They've done this for many years for us. It just formalizes the agreement with them.
Motion to approve the agreement?
So moved, Eddington.
Second, Little.
Motion been made in second. Any comments?
I just.
Manager May.
Wanted to add, just for definition, is that these are the stormwater facilities that were up there and built when we had the Surface Water Protection District that was disbanded, so we've inherited these locations. They're unique qualification for maintaining this.
The county is using, is uniquely qualified to handle this better than we are. They, they've done this for many years for us. It just formalizes the agreement with them.
Motion to approve the agreement?
So moved, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion been made in second. Any comments?
I just.
Manager May.
Wanted to add, just for definition, is that these are the stormwater facilities that were up there and built when we had the Surface Water Protection District that was disbanded. So we've inherited these locations. Their unique qualification for maintaining this is they were maintaining it for the district, so they.
Correct.
They know this better than anybody else, and we don't.
And we do assist them, you know. We have gone out there and helped, when it's been overwhelmed with floodwater, we have gone up there and helped them pump it out. But now, since they installed new infrastructure two years ago now, we don't have to go up there as often. So it's, it's been kind of nice that they've kind of taken over the maintenance part of this for us. It's, it's made us, it made our job a little bit easier.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, DMMC Legislative Action Program. Board to consider resolution to adopt a legislative action program developed by the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference. I'm going to look for Trustee Addington to give us a.
Thank you, Mayor. Every year, the Legislative Committee, on which I sit along with Patty, develops or suggests topics. We usually start out with as many as 15 different topics, and then this gets wielded down. The last three years, we have gotten this down, as many of you have seen, we pass it around, a one-page document that really has five bullet points that we're, that we're stressing on. Prior to that, it was a multi-page book, and it was unwielding, and quite honestly, it got very little traction, because that's not what the legislators were looking for. They, they much prefer this, this, it's a clean, one-page document. They know what our, our main focuses are, and then they can work with us. And we've gotten a lot of compliments. Those of you who attended the Legislative Dinner last month heard the legislators say that, that that's what they prefer. And this is done now every year. So now we have a new one for the 2020. There are five main topics, which you can see in the, in the resolution, and so this will go forward as, as our main thrust for this year. Some of these items that are on here already, bills have already been written and have gone through the writing process and may already have been filed. I think there's three or four that already have, we're moving along with, that, that our lobbyists have gotten, taken care of, and gotten sponsors and, and are moving forward. We'll learn more about that in another two weeks when, when Legislative Committee meets. But that's where this is at, and I would make a motion to approve supporting the DuPage Mayors and Managers Program for 2020.
Motion made by Trustee Addington, second.
Little?
Trustee Little. Additional comments? Again, I want to thank Trustee Addington and Patty for their commitment to representing Westmont on this committee. He does a tremendous amount of work and research, so.
I can't wait for the next meeting. I absolutely have no idea. There are a ton of bills, by the way, that have already been filed, and we'll probably get the bulk of them at the next meeting. I know there's a bunch of them to have to do with. It's an election year, folks. You're going to see a lot of stuff about tax cuts and restricting property taxes and everything else, because everybody wants to get reelected. So we'll muddy our way through it.
We'll wait for your report. Get a good night's sleep before.
Yeah.
I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, DMMC Legislative Action Program. Board to consider resolution to adopt a legislative action program developed by the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference. I'm going to look for Trustee Addington to give us a.
Thank you, Mayor. Every year, the Legislative Committee, on which I sit along with Patty, develops or suggests topics. We usually start out with as many as 15 different topics, and then this gets wielded down. The last three years, we have gotten this down, as many of you have seen, we passed it around, a one-page document that really has five bullet points that we're, that we're stressing on. Prior to that, it was a multi-page book, and it was unwielding, and quite honestly, it got very little traction, because that's not what the legislators were looking for. They, they much prefer this, this, it's a clean, one-page document. They know what our, our main focuses are, and then they can work with us. And we've gotten a lot of compliments. Those of you who attended the Legislative Dinner last month heard the legislators say that, that that's what they prefer. And this is done now every year. So now we have a new one for the 2020. There are five main topics, which you can see in the, in the resolution, and so this will go forward as, as our main thrust for this year. Some of these items that are on here already, bills have already been written and have gone through the writing process and may already have been filed. I think there's three or four that already have, we're moving along with, that, that our lobbyists have gotten, taken care of, and gotten sponsors and, and are moving forward. We'll learn more about that in another two weeks when, when Legislative Committee meets.